Welcome, everyone, to Weaver County Commission meeting of the Weaver County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bowles. I'm joined by Commissioner Gage Forer and by Commissioner Jim Harvey.
I don't think the mic's on.
Yeah, I'm not sure your mic's working.
My mic always sounds like this.
There you go.
Bill, we okay?
I am.
I'd like to recognize that we do have a Zoom meeting today with, I think, one participant, who is our county attorney, Mr. Chris Crockett. We will go ahead with our Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite the audience to stand and join us, and after that, we will have an invocation by Tammy Adalot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, on a mission under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered together as servants today and grateful for the opportunities we have to make decisions and help improve the lives of the citizens of Weaver County. We pray that decisions may be guided in this meeting today, that thy Spirit may watch over us and be with those that are in need. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, but...
Amen.
Thank you. Commissioners, item D on our agenda is Commissioner Comments. Anything that you'd like to comment about this morning?
No.
Commissioner Forer?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item E, Agenda-related public comments. Comments will be taken for items that are listed on the agenda. There are two public hearings today. We asked if your comments are regarding those, that you would save those until later in the meeting. But other than that, if there's anyone who'd like to come forward, be welcome to it this time. If you'd please state your name and your city of residence.
We just can't hear you.
Oh, okay. I was giving you the floor. Okay, it looks like there are none, so we'll move on to Item F, Consent Items. Number one, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $628,281.67. Number two, requests for approval of warrants numbers 106042 through 106093 and 493173 through 493268 in the amount of $2,239,434.05. For a summary of our warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Jason Horn, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. So for purchase order, the summary, it looks like we have 22 purchase orders. The total amount is $628,000. Forty-five percent or $282,000 is for the library in the form of books, ebooks, audiobooks, and software maintenance. Thirty-one percent of that is $193,000 for Golden Spike, and that's for tractors and concessions. And then 11% or $71,000 is for property management, and that is for a replacement chiller. The warranty summary is total warrants of $148 for $2.2 million. Forty-four percent or $985,000 is construction at 12th Street and 2775, 2725 North. That's paid for with transportation tax dollars. 10% or $223,000 is ramp award for Heritage Park in the Taylor West Weaver area. 8% or $174,000 is the Conference Center renovation, Weaver Center renovation feasibility study. 7% or $152,000 is escrow release for Single Tree Acres in Kenneth Iverson. And then 5% or $112,000 is for the jail, and that's in the form of food, utilities, and healthcare services. The top five vendors would be number one, Staker Parsons at $971,000, Taylor West Weaver Parks District at $223,000, the Single Tree Acres at $132,000, Hogan and Associates Construction for $124,000, and number five is Pleasant View City Corporation for $87,000. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Horn?
None for me.
None for me.
Okay, thank you. Number four, requests for approval of new business licenses. Number five, requests from the Weaver Morgan Health Department for approval of surplus computers and printer copiers. Number six, requests for approval of minutes for the meeting held on September 23rd, 2025. Number seven, requests for approval of the new Weaver County Sheriff's Office sworn pay grades. Number eight, requests for approval of the new Weaver County general employee pay grades. Number nine, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Carol Mortensen for representation of indigent persons in the Second District Juvenile Court. Number 10, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and GVH Distribution Northwest, Inc., for installation of a security fence. Number 11, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Whiskey Throttle School District, LLC, to hold the Whiskey Throttle Race Nights event at the Golden Spike Event Center. Number 12, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Select Health for the 2026 Select Health Contract. Number 13, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Intermountain Health for the 2026 Employee Assistance Program. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? If none, I'm going to make a motion.
None, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion if you're ready to accept.
Please.
We approve the consent items as listed today, Items 1 through 13.
I'm going to second that with a comment if I might.
Please.
Consent Item 11, dealing with Whiskey Throttle LLC at the night races, just want to say I've had a number of people call on this, all positive about how that was well-attended by the public, and it's a great use of Commissioner Harvey's portfolio out there at the Golden Spike Arena. It makes use of some land that is jointly used now with a horse facility, but I think the income, from what I understood from Marty, was fairly substantial that the day that they had the first one. So, anyway, it's positive things coming from Golden Spike that were starting to generate revenue.
That's great. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G, action items. Number one, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Hogan and Associates Construction, Inc., for assistance as needed during construction at the ice sheet. Mr. Marty Smith, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hope it's okay. I'm filling in for Todd. We had two things going this morning. A call with World Curling Federation there in Europe. It's late for them, so we're splitting duties, and I'll cover this if that's okay. This is in agreement with Hogan Associates Construction. As you know, we're in the middle of the $3.8 million renovation at the ice sheet. Todd approached me asking if he could just general manage that project design and basically act as the project manager, as opposed to hiring an architect and a general contractor, which is ultimately saving us probably over half a million dollars on that project that we can put back into the project. And I asked him if we, you know, if he had the bandwidth to do it.
He has the bandwidth to do it.
Right. So, thank you to Todd for managing this project and helping us put more into the project. But what we did need is access to some subcontractors. So, we worked with legal and Jason in procurement. We basically put out, asking for bids and proposals for some general contracting services and access to subcontractors. And Hogan Associates won that. They came in with a proposal at no cost. As you know, they're the contractor doing the Conference Center remodel. And so, they offered to this service for us to just help us general contract some subs that we need to finish the project off at no cost. So, this agreement today is just to contract with Hogan for those services.
Any questions?
None for me, thank you.
Madam Chair, in your presentation, Mr. Smith, will you please, as a matter of public record, how this was funded?
Oh, the ice sheet project? The ice sheet project was funded solely out of the Olympic funds, legacy funds for legacy Olympic venues from the state and the legislature. So, this money came through DFCM at the state level. We're putting no money into this project. It's going to be really great. Basically, taking the ice sheet back to new, a new mechanical room, new ice plant, paint, flooring, locker rooms, audio, video, internet, all of those things, all from the state. So, that's how that was funded. Commissioner, thanks for asking.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd just like to point out that I find it refreshing that our team is working on all of these improvements. One, while it's slow, but two, so we're not having to finish up in the 11th hour or the 20, you know, before the World Curling event, which takes place late April, first part of May this next year. We were selected by them, the World Curling, to come here, and that was a request. And so, that's a tribute to you, Marty, and your team. Please pass that along. It takes a great reputation to earn a request like that, and that's a big thing. You know, people hear about World Cups of Soccer and these, and while curling's not on the stage quite like some of these other things, but it still, nonetheless, it still holds that type of notoriety for that sport. So, that's a great achievement. Thank you so much for doing that. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract as presented by Mr. Smith this morning.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Item H, public hearings. We look for a request, or I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene the public hearings, and then we will go through these individually, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn this meeting and go into a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. We'll go to Item 2, public hearing regarding annexation of unincorporated islands into Plain City. Mr. Sean Wilkinson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. All right. Well, Commissioners, we've discussed this a little bit in work sessions previously. As you're aware, Weaver County and Plain City have been working together to improve the unincorporated areas of 2200 North, which is located within an unincorporated island surrounded by Plain City. Weaver County has already made improvements to this road and acquired property to accommodate future improvements. But prior to acquiring additional property and making final improvements, the county has asked for Plain City's cooperation to annex a portion of the unincorporated island, and that's for the purpose that Weaver County does not provide the road maintenance of that section anymore. It would become part of Plain City. The proposed annexation area consists of one island, but it's divided into three sections, and you can see that up here on...
Thank you. I was going to ask you about that.
So, there's Section 1, Section 2 in blue, and Section 3 in pink. Let me just scroll down a little bit here.
Thank you. There we go.
There you go. So, those are the three sections that we're talking about, and that's all part of one larger island. Now, there is a portion of this island known as the JDC Ranch Development that is not being annexed at this time, or proposed for annexation. The attached resolution that you have begins the annexation process described in the State Code, Section 102812, and that's for annexation of an unincorporated island without a petition. So, if the county commission approves the resolution recommending annexation of the island, then Plain City will hold a public hearing and vote to approve or deny a similar resolution. So, in the resolution, we have addressed the formal findings that the county commission must make in order to consider approval, and I'd like to go through those quickly. The first one is the area to be annexed can be more efficiently served by the municipality than by the county. I think that road maintenance is maybe the best example that we have of how that would take place. There are areas that can only be accessed through Plain City's existing roads to get to the unincorporated areas, and it's clear that it would be more efficient for the city to maintain these. The second one is the area to be annexed is not likely to be naturally annexed by the municipality in the future as the result of urban development. And the State Code defines urban development as "a housing development with more than 15 residential units and an average density greater than one residential unit per acre," or "commercial or industrial development for which project or cost projections exceed $750,000 for all phases." So, all of the parcels in Sections 1 and 2, excuse me, that should be, I think that's 1 and 3, are zoned agricultural A1 and A2. Both zones require a minimum of 40,000 square feet per dwelling lot, and it's not likely that these areas will develop in a way to meet the definition of urban development. Then the parcels in Section 2, the blue area up above, are already subdivided into individual lots, so there's not a chance of additional development happening there. The third item is the annexation of the area is likely to facilitate the consolidation of overlapping functions of local government. So, examples of services provided for these areas that could be consolidated include police, fire, emergency services, road maintenance, and snow removal, planning and zoning, engineering, and solid waste disposal. And finally, annexation of the area is likely to result in an equitable distribution of community resources and obligations. And we believe this annexation proposal allows the services and resources listed above to be provided more efficiently and equitably. So, Commissioners, you have a few options to consider. You can approve the resolution as written, including the exhibits, which are the islands that you see here, the areas that are on the map. You can amend the resolution and these exhibits by removing some of those areas if you wanted to. We can't expand that to take in additional areas because there are noticing procedures that we have to follow very specifically. Or you can deny the resolution, and then this goes away because it will not be forwarded to Plain City. So, I just wanted to let you know, Commissioners, we did follow exactly what the State Code required as far as noticing. We advertised for a public hearing, and we sent notice to every affected property owner within each of these sections. I had a few phone calls, a few emails. Everyone has been very nice as we've talked. I think the biggest issue that I have heard is what is going to happen to my taxes if the property is annexed into Plain City. So, I wanted to go over that quickly. So, I worked with our treasurer to get what those taxes would equate to. So, right now, let's say there's a house valued at $500,000. In the unincorporated area, for municipal services, that home pays $43.72 per year. In Plain City...
Per thousand?
That's for an average home, $500,000.
Forty-three total.
Forty-three total per year. Yeah, it's...
Not per thousand.
Not a lot, no. It's not a lot of money. So, in Plain City, it's $64.90. So, there's a difference of just over $20. Okay. Now, we have to consider the fire district here, though, because unincorporated residents pay a tax to the Weaver Fire District to provide fire services, but Plain City has a volunteer fire department, so they are not charged that same rate. So, for a home, if these properties are to annex into Plain City, potentially on a $500,000 home, residents could see an overall savings of about $276 per year on their taxes, and that's because of that fire district. If the fire district is taken out of the equation, going into Plain City is about $20 more. So, that's the tax impact that we're talking about. Other than that, Commissioners, I'm open to questions.
Thanks for reviewing that tax part of it, Sean. I appreciate that. Any questions?
Just to clarify, so, right now, they do pay, anybody within these areas of address does pay to the fire district approximately per $500,000 value, about $276.
That would be the savings.
Well, that's the savings.
The charge from the fire district is $341.55 per year.
$341, okay. So, the differential, the $276, came from the amount that Plain City would charge versus what?
Correct.
Fire, Weaver Fire District would charge.
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Just making sure, then, to repeat, that those who would be annexed would enjoy those services from Plain City, including the volunteer fire department.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. We'll open this item up for public hearing. If there's anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to this resolution, you're welcome to do so now. If you'd please state your name and city of residence.
Yeah. My name is Kevin Allred, and I live on 2600 North, which is the state road. So, Plain City doesn't service the sides of the road at all there, and my concern is the ordinances from one to the other. Because right now, Plain City, I was told from Sean, that they are zoned E15 to E20 around us. Now, I have just under 2 acres, but not enough but 5 acres that they consider... I can't remember now.
Greenbelt?
Well, so, we did discuss agricultural uses on his property, and some of those, because he's zoned A2 in the unincorporated area, but some of the uses...
A1, I thought.
Oh, sorry, A1. Some of those uses require 5 acres, even in the A1 zone.
Right. And my concern was, okay, in his letter, it said that we would still remain an A1, but until when we switch over to Plain City, if we switch over to Plain City, we still remain an A1, but then Plain City could, down the road, could change our zoning. And we don't know what that would happen, where that would go. And that's pretty much mine. And to me, I would like to have known what Plain City's stance is on annexing us because they've had several chances to do it over the years and never did it. And last one was, what, four years ago, when the Nilson Homes put that subdivision in, and they ran sewer in front of ours. Now, they gave us opportunity to hook up to that sewer line because we were on Septi. But then, it's, you know, nothing else has been done to that, and I would like to hear what they have. And with the election coming up, I'd like to know the candidates, what, how they feel about being annexing this property in. Now, I don't know it's up to them or it's up to you on what goes on there, but I'd like to hear their stance on what they're going to consider us as and what we can expect from Plain City. And that's pretty much what I've got.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm Debbie Allred, his wife.
Tell me your first name again.
Debbie Allred. So, like he said, we've been in our house for 39 years, and this issue's come up over and over, but nothing's ever changed. And to be honest, Plain City hasn't really done anything for us besides letting us hook up to the sewer. But it would have been nice for Weaver County and Plain City to work together to take care of our little section, as example sidewalks. Wherever there was a subdivision, sidewalks went in. Ended here, ended here. Left us on a road. At the time, it's 50 miles per hour. And yes, it's a state road, but they was able to put sidewalks in for these other homes. I have to cross that road to get my mail. There's only two of us in that area that have to cross the road to get our mail, me and my neighbor. And I fought it with the post office. I don't know if Plain City could help me, Weaver County could help me. I personally don't know what the annexation is going to do for us personally. You have to get a fire department. What else? What else can we have? What else do they have to offer us? Because right now, I don't see anything that they're, we're just like a little island, and we'll probably still be looked at as a regular island. So, that's my comments.
Thank you so much. Good morning.
I'm Brett Molding. I live in Area 3. And Gage, I think I played basketball with you.
I think you did.
A long time ago.
Yeah. Let's not bring that up.
No, we're not going to name dates.
No.
I own about 40 acres in the area, and including on that is two homes. Our property is along the dirt road. The Plain City has attempted multiple times to purchase frontage off of me and has told me that they're just going to take the frontage off of my property that runs along the course of that, as well as Travis Murphy, who's up on the mountain hunting elk, so he can't be there. Plain City appears to me to be very hostile in their approach to taking over that property, kicking me back and putting in the road that they want to put in and condemning my property. I'm not interested in having a road in there. I'm not interested in having that dirt road be open to traffic. We like it the way it is now. We've had wonderful service from the county, and we've had nothing but headaches from the city in their approach to our ownership of property. Travis owns another piece of property up there that's about 30 acres. I have about 40 acres of that property in a lot of little pieces, and then, like I said, a home on both sides of that road. In one way or the other, they will, they plan to open that up as the development just east of my property is going to be developed. And now, their piece to the west has been developed. We do not want to be part of Plain City. The services we receive are excellent from Weaver County. I enjoy being in Weaver County, and I don't have any intentions of knowingly going into that area. I like the little open area we have. We have ponds. We have ducks and geese that live out there on that land. We run a cattle herd. I'm a little hoarse today because I've been herding cattle for two days straight. And I don't know if you've ever heard cattle, but when you herd cattle, you holler a lot. And oftentimes, you use words you probably wouldn't use anyplace else to convince those cows they need to go down that and get in that corral. So, I'm a little hoarse today from two days of herding. But we have a cattle herd. I have property to the west in the county, out in the west Warren area, and I have property in Slaterville in the county, 150 acres in Warren, 120 acres in Slaterville. That property I have is part of the ranch I have. I do not want it to be out of the county and one piece in the city. So, I would like to remain in this county. I'd like to have my neighbors who want to stay in the county also tell you they enjoy the services of the county. There's no need for us to make this change. I know that some of the developers who have approached me about it want this property to be in the city, but I have no intention of, in my lifetime, selling this property or ever developing it. We enjoy where we bought our land many years ago and where we live today. We appreciate you considering denying Plain City the annexation of our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm a little confused why Weaver County is forsaking us.
Can you, sorry, can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Carol Manning, and I live on 2600 North, the state road. And we're in that agricultural island, which seems to me a logical place for us to stay. One thing I will say about Plain City, I grew up in Plain City. I was born and raised there. I have a sign in my home that says, "Plain City, my hometown." But would you like your neighbor coming into your home and telling what you, what you can do and what you can't do? As an agricultural owner, Plain City, for many years, every time we were burning off our pasture, would send up their fire department to tell us we couldn't be burning, even though we had gotten a permit from Weaver County that allowed us to burn. So, that's one reason I'm against going into Plain City. They have a hard time minding their own business. The other reason is when we got a permit from Weaver County to add on to our home, Plain City comes up and puts a cease and desist order on our home. So, as much as I love Plain City, I don't want them telling me what I can and cannot do with my land that I'm used to doing for my... that I'm used to doing for, I won't admit how old I am. But I don't see any benefit with the agricultural part being annexed into Plain City. And I have a question. What's the ranch that's being exempted?
When I refer to JDC Ranch, it's the name of the subdivision that Nielsen Homes is doing right now. Yes, the large development.
So they're still in Weaver County?
They will still be in Weaver County.
Okay. Well, it seems to me then Weaver County is able to develop lands for other people. And our agricultural land, I just don't see how it benefits Plain City. And I'm begging you to not forsake us and let us remain in Weaver County.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is John Allen. I'm on 2600 North in the Area 3. I like to feel like I'm both part of the old and the new generation out there in Plain City. I grew up in Plain City, just over 1900. And moved around Utah a bit. And just several years ago, I made the decision to move back out to that area. It's a beautiful area. I love that area. I did make the conscious decision to move into an area that was designated unincorporated Weaver County. I really do have faith in the county tremendously. And I have seen the work that the county does. And I'm very happy with the services I'm provided through Weaver County. My concerns are with my purpose of moving out to that area with the desire to be under the umbrella of Weaver County. I get a little bit, kind of disheartened to know that those efforts were in vain to where I'm just going to be brought right into Plain City where I made the conscious effort to be part of Weaver County. I heard you say kind of one of the biggest reasons of the annexation would be road maintenance. You'll have to forgive me here. Wouldn't that be covered under the state with it being a state road?
On that road, yes.
Okay. So with that being said, I'm not seeing any benefits for my property to be annexed by Plain City. I feel like it would only bring heartache for me personally. And I feel like a lot of my neighbors feel the same. If I'm presented with more benefits for this to happen, I'm all ears. But from what I understand, the biggest benefit is going to be road maintenance, which doesn't apply to where I am at in Zone 3. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I need to state my name again?
Oh, did you have something to add? Okay, have you gone here three minutes yet?
I have no memory. But I want to ask, who lives in a $500,000 home? So my taxes are going to be much more than what $500,000 is. And I'm assuming everyone else's is as well. Because I haven't seen a house built in Plain City that's under $750,000.
Gage, my name's Scott Manning. I live on 2600. I'd just like to add that that road is a state road, that they do not do anything. I have about eight acres of agriculture. And just a few things that Plain City has done. I was burning, they drove their trucks, fire trucks with the sirens and everything, down through my field, made ruts and everything because I was burning when I'm not in Plain City. Weaver County Fire told me once that if I have something on fire, they better hope that Weaver County makes it there before Plain City. Because their fire, their volunteer fire department's not that good. I'm working in my field with, my dog is with me. The animal control, Plain City's animal control comes and tells me if I don't have my dog on a leash or in a kennel, I'm going to get a ticket. I thought, this is all my property, my dog's right with me. The dog is not going to be in a kennel or on a leash. By the time this goes down, the police are there. So I'm thinking, you know, why can't I work in my field without dog, animal control there and the police? Then they figure out that it's Weaver County and they all leave. So Plain City is just not... How, best way to say this? They don't know exactly what they're doing. They're trying to tell you, you can do this, you can't do this, you've got to do this. So it makes my life a lot easier and I think my neighbor's life a lot easier if we just stay in Plain City because they don't do anything for us.
We want to stay in Weaver County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, stay in Weaver County. Cross that out.
We know what you mean.
And put it in Weaver County.
Won't hold you to that.
I played basketball with him too.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward on this item?
Yes, I would just like to, you know, I was under the impression that, you know, John Beasley might have been here. And with the candidates for mayor coming up, just so we could know what their stance was on this situation.
I'll address that after the public hearing.
Pardon me?
I will address that after the public hearing. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Commissioners, before we move on to the others, and I don't want this conversation to get convoluted. So I'd like to address some of these things. And invite Mayor Beasley if you'd like to. You'll probably cross a lot of things off my list if I invite you to come forward. Thanks for being here.
All right. So I just took a couple of quick notes. Oh, I'm John Beasley, Mayor Plain City. To address your zoning stuff, Plain City doesn't change zoning unless you request it. You'll come in as A-1 or A-2, whatever you currently are, and you'll stay that way until you decide to change it. We don't change it. You'll be treated no different than anybody else in Plain City. We actually look for more projects inside of Plain City for sidewalks. Connecting that is something we have discussed between the two subdivisions. As for anything else, I don't know when... I'm going to say it was back in the early 90s that we had our own police department and dog catcher. We've been with the county sheriff's department since, I'm going to say 92-ish. I believe Scott Jenkins was the mayor at the time that we switched. So needless to say, if dog catcher comes, it's Weaver County. Let's see. Commissioners, it's your call. Sean and I started this just to clean some stuff up. If you see fit to turn this over and clean these islands up, Plain City will follow suit. If you choose not to, so be it. Talking to your roads department, talking to the engineering side, it is a headache for them to come in and push these little pockets and clean these up. And paving the road on 2200, connecting those residents to all of the services in Plain City, the elementary, the church that they attend, our little commercial district there with Kents and all of our commercial stuff there. That just makes sense. We haven't forced anybody to sell anything. We've asked. As for the confrontation that Mr. Molding brought up, back when Scott Jenkins was the county commissioner, we had a meeting out there when we started the project. It was a private meeting. We didn't have any answers to any questions yet. Sean was there. We were followed up to City Hall. They tried to force their way in when, honestly, we had no... Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's not necessarily true at all. So we had no answers yet. This was our second meeting on the project. So I don't know where he's coming up with the hostility other than I did tell him, this is a closed meeting. This is not a public meeting. This is a meeting between us and trying to come up with some solutions. So anyway, commissioners, as I said, it's your call. If you'd like to clean these islands up, let's get started. If not, so be it. And we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry, that public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do you have questions for the mayor or for Mr. Wilkinson?
I do have a question, if I might. I think Mr. Wilkinson, and you might as well stand up here as well, Mayor. So I just want to make sure we clarify it. So if the resolution is passed, it goes to Plain City. At that point in time, the council has the ability to either approve or not approve. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the final decision really rests on the city. And I think that would give the opportunity for the public and some of the questions that were brought up in terms of what their public officials will do. And I think the mayor's made it clear on zoning. But maybe some of the people running for office would attend that meeting and be willing to give their input. Am I correct in that assumption?
You are correct.
Okay, that's...
I have a follow-up to that question. And Chris, if you're online, you might be able to answer this. Or you might, Sean, as well. If the county approves this on our end and then it goes to Plain City, to the point of one of the speakers talked about the election, is there a timeline? Is there a timeline wherein Plain City would have to accept this? Or could they choose? Chris, you probably know the answer. I don't know, unless you do, Sean. Okay.
I do.
As far as the timeline for this to take place...
If we approved this, my question is, could Plain City sit on this until their new officials were in office?
Yes, they could.
They can.
Okay. Just curious. Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
To follow up with that, Commissioner, we would post our public hearing... We have a meeting Thursday, so two weeks from Thursday. We'd put that on the agenda to have that public hearing set.
Okay.
So it'd be the first meeting of November, we'd have that public hearing, probably.
Thank you. And I'm sure that a lot of these concerns would be addressed by your council.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Just on this particular item before we get to the other. Coming from the private enterprise, private side to this, first off, for those who made comments today, thank you so much for the compliments on our staff and the services that have been provided out there. That's not always the case, what we hear. But the fact that you bring those forward in a public meeting is appreciated. When I got here nine years ago, I was told if I ever wanted to do the right thing, and the hard thing was is to eliminate all islands, including where I live out in south. Uwena area, the Uwena, where there's a little, I live in a little teeny unincorporated, just like many of you, where you are right there. And I imagine there'll be a time and a day that the same thing will come. But the county, for instance, Davis County, is about built out. And I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand it. The growth is happening all around us. And it's just the best thing you can do to keep from, to keep the lifestyle that you're used to is to not sell. And to continue to keep your 40 acres or 116 acres or whatever. The comment was made, I think, by Mayor Beasley. And Sean, you have to bring that annexation. But what normally happens is you sell. And then the new buyer brings that annexation. So if you were to sell and the new annexation comes in, that affects your neighbors. And you're gone, so it doesn't really matter. That's what I've seen or it's what I've learned. I'm still learning and I appreciate that. This is something that many, and I'm a little chagrined, so many that we've heard for the last three or four years are not here, wanting this to go through, that patch to go through. There's been a lot of time and energy put on this. And so this is one of the hard things to do. But those are my comments.
Okay. Sean?
Commissioner, can I address just a couple of things?
Please.
First, it was brought up, who owns a $500,000 house? That's an average house in Utah right now. And I get it, most houses in this area are more than that. But the taxes will follow that. So if we increase that to $750,000, the corollary follows. So there's a $20 difference between unincorporated Weaver County and Plain City based on the value of the home. That will...
Make it 30.
Yeah, it'll just increase incrementally. But it's, we're not talking about thousands of dollars.
And the fire would decrease as well incrementally?
Yes, correct.
So if I might make a comment, so I could. So just so we explain that, that's really a formula that the state tax commission puts forth. So if you live in a million-dollar house, times it by two. If you live in a 250, divide by two. But we use that term, and Sean correctly used it because that's applied by the state tax commission anytime we talk about taxes, tax increases, et cetera. You'll see that on notices for truth in taxation, et cetera.
Yeah. The other, I want to address the JDC Ranch area that is not being annexed. So because we're using this process, which does not require a petition and it's basically an agreement between Weaver County and Plain City, Plain City has told us that it would be a nonstarter if that area was included. So in order to get these other islands taken care of, we had to leave that property out of this request. And that is the reason why.
Thank you.
And then finally, there was a question about 2200 North being blocked off. We've been approached by the Weaver Fire District Fire Marshal. And he has told us that the roadblock needs to be removed because it's a major safety issue. And they are going to follow through with us to make sure that that happens. So we need to talk to Plain City and figure out moving that roadblock. That is going to be a through road. So if there's any thought about it, if it stays unincorporated, that it's not a through road, that will not be the case. I just need to make that very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add to that a little bit?
Yes.
So right now, that road, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is 16 feet wide.
Yes.
And it's dirt. And we've got kids that use that to walk to school. And in no way, shape, or form am I going to put kids on the same road with cars, especially that narrow. You can't fit two cars on 16-foot without one hugging that shoulder. So that's why we started the whole process of getting that widened, buying that ditch, getting it filled in and getting it paved, was to fill that access there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, we will move on to our public... I'm sorry, we're still in a public meeting. Item 3 is a public hearing to consider a request regarding a development agreement to preserve development rights and allow for phased and exemption of installation of certain infrastructure for a future three-lot subdivision located at 6210 East, 2300 North Eden, Utah 84310 in the AV3 zone. Tammy Edalot, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request by the property owner to include 40 acres in a development agreement. And the purpose, I think you pretty much boiled it down, but I'll restate it, is to, the applicant is looking to develop a few lots in the near future and is seeking, I guess, a deferral in installing what we would typically require with subdivisions, which are oftentimes full county standard roadways. Oftentimes, fire will require a hydrant plan. So there's some typical infrastructure required at subdivision. And this applicant is seeking to defer those improvements until further development occurs with the remainder of his land or adjacent. So the gist of this development agreement that you have in your staff report is to not only preserve his 12 development rights based on his 40 acres in the AV3 zone. And he has used one of those development rights for the existing home that sits on the piece of land, as well as to be able to develop in a timeline that would better suit his needs. Now, the planning commission heard this back on August 26. They didn't have any concerns with what the applicant was proposing. We have had a few changes to the proposed development agreement, which we've gone over with the county commissioners in their last work session a couple of weeks ago. But do you have any questions for me? I stated, sorry, that the planning commission recommended approval of this.
Then you said that there had been a couple of changes since that?
Yeah, there was a little bit, I think, of... There was a lack of clarity as far as which portions of his land to include in here. If he wants to be able to preserve the 12 development rights, then we need to include all 40 acres. But I think there were concerns about what may be required as far as access across that 40 acres. So the applicant is offering... So the applicant is offering to, to grant an easement along the southern boundary of his property to enable connectivity for future development. Sorry. And that is what, you're fine, that's what he's offering in exchange for this memorialization of his development rights and the allowance to defer some of these improvements.
Okay, let me ask a question. You said that they were wanting to develop three lots in the near future?
That is what the applicant has proposed, between two and three lots, depending on his progress with the health department.
Okay. So if we defer this and don't require them to put in that infrastructure, I assume there will be a way for those three lots to be served?
So that is in the development agreement. The applicant has worked extensively with Weaver Fire District on making sure that access to that three lot subdivision meets their minimum standards. They are requiring sprinkler systems or fire suppression systems within those homes. Once development occurs beyond those three lots, at that point, whatever standards are in place will likely be applied to, to further development.
Okay. That was my only question. Commissioner Forrester?
None for me, thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
None.
Okay. We would like to invite the public up to speak to this request, if there are any here to speak to that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item four, a public hearing to consider a modification to the Nordic Valley Street Regulating Plan exhibit in the development agreement only. These changes include street cross-sections, and if approved, would only apply to the Nordic Development.
Okay. I want to make sure that I clarify on the record. So we have, in the general plan for Ogden Valley, and as, as part of our governing documents, we have a street regulating plan for the Nordic Valley area. A few years ago, the Nordic developers did an amendment to their development agreement that included an exhibit of the street regulating plan as well as the form-based zoning ordinance. What they are proposing to change is not the Nordic Street Regulating Plan that applies to that entire area, but the exhibit within their development agreement. And you've seen their exhibit, their proposed exhibit, they are seeking to shift one of their roadways further west, which what it really means is they're seeking to shift density further west. If you look at their parcels across Nordic Valley Way, where they're doing that roadwork, they have a loop road. They're not looking for any additional density. They're not looking to change any street type. They're simply looking to shift density within their project further to the west, towards that roundabout at Nordic Valley Way and Nordic Valley Drive. Sorry, Viking Drive.
Viking.
Yes. The other, the other change that they're looking to make, they're looking to add a couple of different cross-section potential for their roadways. They're looking, when they look at cross-slope easements and the topography over there, they found that some of the requirements in the form-based zone that require angled parking, the slopes in that area don't always allow for it. So they've proposed some cross-sections that allow for more parallel parking in some of those areas. So that's what they're also looking to include, are those road cross-sections, and then amending that map within their development agreement.
Any questions? Questions?
None for me, thank you.
I was good until you started on the parking.
I will say, a representative for the applicant is here. If you want some more detail on that, I'm happy to allow him to answer that.
Please.
Mr. Langbart is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice drive in the rain this morning. Felt refreshing. Eric Langbart, Langbart Design Group, 336 West Broadway, Salt Lake City. So yeah, to answer your question, there are provisions in the, the development agreement that basically say, here are your street types, but if you run into slopes, you may provide this instead. So the language is in there in the development agreement and in our former ordinance that's tied to the development agreement. All we're doing is saying, these specifically are how we're going to implement this. Where we can't do angled parking, the 45 degrees, we would still put in the parallel parking. The reason we can't do the angled parking is that one of our streets in particular is 8 to 10% slope. So what we find is if you're parking on an angled parking and you open your door on that kind of slope, it'll fly open. Where the parallel parking, if it flies open, there aren't cars adjacent to you. So all we're doing is going in and clarifying our options that are discussed in the language, but not in as much graphic form. So we're just preparing three sections that say, this is what we're proposing in three different parts of our property, if that makes sense.
I appreciate you bringing it, Madam Chair. I appreciate you bringing up door dings, that's important. But I was more, I was just as equally, if not more concerned. You know, you park down, you park down going down a hill in a snowy country, which could even be on this side of the mountains versus that side of the mountains, with a lot of front-wheel-drive cars, you're not getting out. You put somebody in there parallel, you say, "parallel parking"?
Mm-hmm, parallel.
Yeah. It can be just as tough. So my, I'm worried about him getting stuck.
Yeah, it, it is a good concern and I kind of compare it to, and, and just one other thing I'll add to that before I comment, is that this is parking that's on the street that is not needed to account for our requirements. Almost all of our parking within our development will be under the condominiums.
It's additional.
It's additional. And so I do believe that it's anticipated that, that the resort will maintain these streets. And so I kind of compare it to Park City, which by the way, is parallel parking and steeper. But they know that it is a, a value to keep that clear. And, you know, I, I do understand your concern. But we think it's better to not only have the parallel parking as an option when it's not icy and, and snow, which we hope, you know, we get good snow. That's, that's obviously something we want to do, is have to remove it. But the fact that it is there in excess, I think, to, the other option is that we go in and we just put the drive lanes in and no parking. We think that that's maybe a, a short-sighted approach to, at least given the option that there is a big event, you know, maybe a concert in the amphitheater, that that parking is there for, for overflow, basically. And we are providing, Commissioner Harvey, that 22 feet. So it is a good amount of space. You know, we're not going 9 by 18. We're, we're providing a, a larger space there, which hopefully gives a little bit of room for some maneuvering in and out.
Then, then, Madam Chair, within that development agreement, I want to just make sure that Weaver County or their residents moving forward, our children, our grandchildren are never responsible to plow any of that up there within that development. If they're the ones going to take care of it, they need to take care of it up there. But I don't want taxpayers to have to be burdened with that.
And I think that...
And that would be really, I'm trying to help with the new city there.
Yeah.
So that they would never be forced to maintain that if they choose to do that, that way.
And Tammy, do you recall, I know Nordic Valley Way that has angled parking, that was the discussion in the agreement, was that it wasn't going to be, that maybe the street would be plowed by the, the government entity, but the parking itself? I, I know that was an issue with the discussion we had with your engineering group.
You know, I could guess.
Correct.
Charlie says yes.
Okay. And so I assume it would be the same, was that if, if that, the drive lanes were plowed by the public entity, that the parking spaces themselves would be removed by the HOA or the resort or whoever's in charge of that?
And that's in the development agreement? Very good. Thank you. That's my end of my questions, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Thank you.
Don't go far. With those questions answered, we will now go to the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak to this agenda item, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Okay. Seeing none, item five is a request for a motion to adjourn the public hearings and reconvene the public meeting. Commissioners?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're now back, back in a public meeting. For item six, which is action on the public hearings. H1 is a request for approval of the resolution. Mr. Brandt, do you have a number on that? I don't have a number.
Yes, 39-2025.
Thank you. Request for approval of resolution 39-2025 recommending the annexation of certain parcels within an unincorporated island into Plain City. Any discussion?
No.
Comment, if I might?
Please.
So I've got to admit, I'm somewhat torn on this issue. From the county's perspective, you know, we have always taken a look at if we can reduce these islands, therefore reducing services for areas that join cities. That's in the best interest of the taxpayers that, that we have in the remaining part of the county. But I'm torn because I'm in the opposite situation. I've been in Weaver County all my life where I live, and I'm forced, I'll be forced on January 1 to go into a city that you talk about, you don't know what services, Plain City. I'll tell you, we don't know what services we're even going to get in the new Ogden Valley City. So I relate to where you're coming from. It's kind of a forced annexation for a lot of us in the valley that 1,000 people or more weren't happy with or aren't happy with. But in the interest of, of letting the local control make the decisions and looking at state law that encourages dissolution of islands for the unincorporated part, and understanding that, at the end of the day, the city council will have the right to approve or not. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
So I'm going to make a motion to pass this on to the city council, which would move to approve the resolution 39-2025.
As bad as I hate to, your reasons are, it's good. So I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Brandt?
Roll call vote for resolution 39-2025. Commissioner Forrester?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Item H3, request for approval of a development agreement to preserve development rights and allow for phased and exemption of installation of certain infrastructure for a future three lot subdivision located at 6210 East, 2300 North Eden, Utah 84310, in the AV3 zone.
Madam Chair, this is another example of one person doing their due diligence just to make sure that things are preserved for the future, so it's easy for me to make approval for this development agreement to go forward. Is there a number associated that with Mr. Brandt?
No, there's no corresponding ordinance or resolution for this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that with a comment.
Please.
And so I understand the, the issue here and the issue that Commissioner Harvey brought up, but I also agree that I think it makes sense to make that an option on 8 to 10% slopes, especially in snow country.
This is, this is...
That's for the next item.
Well, that's the next, okay. Excuse me, okay.
We take your comments, though.
I'll say my comment.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now, H4, request for approval of a modification to the Nordic Valley Street Regulating Plan exhibit in the development agreement only. Commissioner Forrester?
Okay, so I'll move approval of, what's that number on that?
No, there's no number on that.
No number, okay. And I think you heard my comments before. I think that just makes sense with that grade to give the option to developer, neither, when you have two feet of snow up in the valley on those slopes, neither parking option's good.
No.
Got to admit that. But I think it gives a little more ability if you have a parallel parking option similar to what was brought up at Park City. So I'll move to approve.
Second.